All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our Fruta City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Bremen. Counselor Perser. Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Present.
Counselor Hansi.
All right. And then before we move into Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance, I wanted to talk to the community members here tonight because I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting. I was out of town and what we're asking is that everybody be really respectful, both to counsel and the other members in the audience. We'd like to ask you to refrain from clapping or cheering or making comments, blurting out comments. Mayor Pro Tem is going to be actually running the public hearing because I'm not able to run that since I wasn't at the first hearing and this is a continuance. But I want to make that clear that he's going to make sure that we're not having any of that because we want to be respectful to all those participating and value the time that everybody's putting in to be here tonight. So that's what I'm going to start with tonight on my side. And then we're going to move into our Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please stand with me. We'd like to take the opportunity to have a moment of silence to allow all faith and belief the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to note for the record and for the audience that all written public comment concerning the mountain water properties that were, that was received by staff after the council packet went out last Friday have been emailed to all of you. They've been uploaded to the packet and that was, the last comment received was at 5:48, I believe. And hard copies are on the dais for you.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
Deb, would you please poll counsel?
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this is the time that we set aside to listen to comments by the public that, on items that do not appear on the agenda. So this will be on any item that isn't related to the mountain properties that are under the public hearing. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, I'm hearing none, so I'm going to close public participation. And then we're going to move into our legislative public hearings. And so with that, I'm going to excuse myself from the council and I'm going to turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tem, Matthew Bremen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So we'll move into our first legislative hearing. A continuance of ordinance 2023-07, the second reading and ordinance authorizing the conveyance of water rights in real property of the city referred to as Enix Lake located on Pinion Mesa. Public Works Director, Director Kimberly Boland and City Attorney Mary Elizabeth Geiger will be presenting. You are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, Kimberly Boland, Public Works Director. Given that this is a continuance item on the ordinance 2023-07, we're not going to repeat the presentation that we gave at the earlier meeting, but counsel did ask for a couple of follow-up items at that meeting that we are prepared to give some information on. As it relates to the Glade Park Pipeline Water Users Agreement or Water Users Association, how they make decisions and then also information regarding the county road and the trails near the area being discussed tonight. So we'll first take the Glade Park Pipeline Water Users Association. We did reach out to them to gather some information about their association and how they conduct business. They are governed by bylaws. They do an annual meeting each year that where they elect four officers, President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and then three members at large. They do an annual meeting where all membership is invited to attend and they hold monthly meetings during the water season, which is typically between May and September. On the second Monday of each month is when they hold their meetings. It's chaired by the president and generally the decisions are reached as a consensus item. But oftentimes they will take a vote to, to make a decision and move that forward. Any information is presented to the city of Fruta when it is relevant, that we know some action that is taken. We don't attend their meetings and we don't have any representation on their board. So with regard to the decision to disconnect the Enix Lake line from the Glade Park line, we believe that they made that decision as a board. They did reach out to the city and contacted us to seek permission for that. We also contacted the water users on the Enix Lake side and everybody was in agreement that it was okay to disconnect those lines, primarily so that they could make repairs on the Glade Park pipeline so that they can obtain water for the summer months this year, which they have received. As it relates to the 18 Mile Road, which there were a lot of questions the last meeting regarding access, staff reached out to the county road and bridge director, as well as the county surveyor. Regarding the road in question, they have said that it has been maintained by the county for many years with maintenance records dating back to 1977. The county will continue to maintain this road as it is, even if the sale of Enix Lake goes through tonight because that's not a basis for them to not continue to maintain a road that's been utilized by property owners south of Enix, as well as access to some of the federal lands. County surveyor also confirmed that South 18 Road is shown on the Mesa County GIS as a valid petition right-of-way. Staff also contacted Bureau of Land Management to talk about any trails that they might manage in that area. They indicated through their realty specialist that there are no BLM trails in the area of Enix Lake and the closest trails that they manage is about two and a half miles away. Staff also contacted the US Forest Service. The acting district ranger responded stating there's a total of six trails on the forest accessed by 18 Mile Road. Ridge ATV Trail 646, Black Pine Trail 647 are both accessed from that 18 Mile Road. The trailhead for Trail 646 is actually located on private land, which they have obtained an easement for to have that trailhead located there. These trails can also be accessed from the west side of the forest, but as they indicated, if closure of 18 Mile Road were to take place, it would severely limit the, the loop experience that people have come to enjoy in that area for the trails. So they, they really don't think that it would be likely that the US Forest Service would approve or support any closure of that road. And with that, I think those were the two items that counsel had asked us to follow up on. And so I'll turn it back to you and available for any questions.
Mary Elizabeth, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
The only thing I wanted to add, and it's in the cover sheet, but Kimberly just didn't totally cover it, is in order to, to have this road vacated as a public county right-of-way would require all the owners of property that utilize the road to come forward with the petition to the county to do that. As Kimberly mentioned, that it would include the US Forest Service, which is likely not going to happen. So it's not something that just one property owner can accomplish and it does require a vote of the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. All right. With that being said, we are going to open this up for public comment, but like the mayor, I too have a, a script that I wrote out so I didn't forget anything. First, we want to thank everyone for coming. And last, and like last time, we want to make sure that everyone that wants to speak has the opportunity to speak and then they get heard. To help facilitate this, we ask that those that want to speak, please sign your name and additional information sheet that's in front of our deputy city clerk, Deb Woods. That, is it by you or is it in the back of the room? Sorry, it's in the back of the room.
Mayor Pro Tem, we, so we have two sheets. The one, people that have already signed up, Deputy City Clerk, Deb Woods has it right here. And then if anybody else wants to sign up during the meeting, they can sign up back here and Mark will bring it up. So. Two places to sign.
Thank you for the clarification. I want to clarify something else that was said to everybody that's attending this hearing. This hearing is a continuation of the public hearing that was held on July 18th, 2023, meaning it is the same public hearing. This also means that all comments made by the public during the hearing that was on July 18th are still valid, being this is the same hearing. Staff's presentation, as you noted, was not a repeat of the presentation made on the 18th, but it was just updates regarding questions that city council had asked them. So typically, we do not allow people to speak twice in the same hearing. However, since city, city staff has presented updates, we ask that anyone who has already spoken on July 18th and desires to speak again, that they keep their comments to new additional information to what has already been spoken, recorded and being considered in this hearing. Once again, we want to ensure that all who desire to be heard are heard. In general, we also ask those wishing to speak for the first time, speak on new information and not repetitive information already addressed by others. To ensure an efficient transition process, our deputy city clerk will call the names of those who have signed up to speak in the order that they signed up. When calling the speaker to the podium, she will also announce the next person to speak. And we ask that that person come up to the seat in the front to kind of save some time between speakers. We ask that every speaker, please state your full name and your full address before speaking. I'd also like to reiterate what the mayor said earlier regarding cheering or jeering. Like a courtroom, we ask that the public refrain from any clapping, cheering, jeering or audible comments to, to maintain decorum and respect all those who are speaking, no matter their views. So with that being said, we'd like to open this up to public comment. Once again, thank you. And Ms. Woods, would you please call out and let us know who's up? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention, if you didn't sign up now, that does not preclude you from getting up to speak later on. So I want to make sure everybody has that opportunity. So.
Right. So one thing I would like to add is that each speaker has three minutes and it will be timed. So the first person that we have on the list is Jim Cook and the second person will be Vera Mulder. So Vera, if you want to come sit in this black rolling chair, Mr. Cook, you can go to the podium. And then Vera, you'll just, when Mr. Cook is finished, then you'll be next.
And I will sound like a broken record tonight, but please state your full name and full address.
Okay, Jim Cook and my address, 2331 South 15 Road, Glade Park, Colorado.
Thank you.
Okay. First thing I want to say is thank you guys for continuing because you didn't have to do that. And this is the final day that we have to make the decision on whether this land sells or whatever happens here. And I want to thank you for that. The other thing is it's, I want to let everybody know that it's not a us and them battle we're trying to do. We hopefully, we can make decisions here and they'll benefit both parties. Sometimes that doesn't work, but it hopefully that'll do. I've been in contact with the potential purchasers and talked with them. We didn't make any decisions, but we had, we came to agreement on several things. But anyway, so what's happened in the past, you guys have, we've, we've set up a website, enixlake.org. I don't know, we've sent it to you guys. I imagine you probably looked at it. We also came up with a proposal and basically the bottom line of that proposal is we'd like to stall the sale or not have the sale or postpone the sale right now. One of the things we've done in, in the interim since then, we've set up a webpage. We've had over 1,000 views. We've had almost 400 individuals sign up on the site and over 200 people are offering to volunteer and help us out. We've got 42 individuals that have wrote the city council, which I know you guys have seen some of those emails. One of the things we're in the process of doing, we've set up or we're in the process of setting up a 501(c)(3) nonprofit status so that we can receive donations. We're almost there. We'll have that done within the next month for sure. We, we've got monitors in place or monitors, people in place, volunteers to monitor the lake campsite, things like that. We've been doing that ongoing right now anyway. But that's, we've got that going all the way until the end of October and we can extend that so that there'll be a presence of somebody at the lake. That's one of the things we're going to try and do and we hope to make that more of a permanent thing. So one of the things that we're, we've already, we will do if the sale is postponed or denied, we, we want to work with the, the city of Fruta at this time because we have reached out to multiple organizations, not just myself, but the friends of Enix Lake have done that. We've got some feedback. Some have said, yeah, well, well, we're interested in helping you. Others are like, no way. Will we even consider this? We've had people step up and say, we'll purchase the property and then work with you on that. That fell through. So we've been in less than a month's time. We've done a lot of work trying to make this happen. We will be in contact with the sheriff's department. If this goes through where we stall the sale, we'll go on to the sheriff's department and set up a line of communication with them so that we can deal with emergencies or law enforcement or whatever they need, which is something that's lacking from the owners that said, the prospective buyers have said that's been an issue with them. That'll be set up. We'll be, continue to come up with partnering organizations. We haven't got anybody right now. We're kind of coming with our hat in our hand. We don't have anything right now, but we've been trying. So what we're asking the city of Fruta to do is to resume the liability you have right now just for the access to the lake. We're not talking water usage. We're not talking, those water contracts can stay in place. We don't have any issue with that at all. We're just wanting access to the lake and we can sit down with you guys, come up with a memorandum of understanding, come up with something like that. But in order for any of that to happen, we have to stall the sale or stop the sale. And I see there's other offers on some of the other properties and that's something that you guys can deal with later. That's not even our issue. So. I think that all of the things that were listed by the potential buyer, potential buyers, you saw those letters, those are all obstacles that can be surmounted. They're, they're not something that we can't do. We have a lot of people that are interested. Okay. Let me finish off. What we'd like to have this do is end, it's a liability right now. We'd like to turn that into an asset and we'd like to be partners with the potential buyers and show that this can actually be a good thing for the public and the public can access it. All right. Any questions? Thanks, Sue.
Not, not. Call Kathleen Morrison up while Vera goes to the podium. In this chair. Yes, please.
My name is Vera Mulder. I live at 983 East Paper Avenue. I've been a resident, I've been involved in Fruta since 1986 anyway. And I was kind of incapacitated about a lot of this information that Mr. Cook talked about because I had this illness and I was kind of a couch potato for several months. So I'm here. I'm going to give you my personal opinion and I hope I don't offend anyone. I will try not to. First of all, the city of Fruta is my city and I have been so proud of all the, the public works, the parks and rec, the personnel that Fruta has managed to hire. But sometimes, and please don't be offended, I wonder about who we elect to councils anyway. My question is, why would any entity sell off water rights when water rights now are gold? Why would we sell 240 acres of prime land, which houses wildlife, when wildlife is experiencing in the past dying from lack of, of, of water, lack, lack of fodder, et cetera? Why would we sell that 240 acres for the price of a house in Fruta? I couldn't buy my neighbor's house for $500,000. I don't get it. It's really a question that thinks, well, anyway. So I also marked down that I wanted to say that the council sits here for four years. After four years, you're gone. But the history of, of Enix Lake is 1950 on. That's when the city of, got it. So why are we going to stash history just because all of a sudden we are new and we, we haven't learned the value of water? And I was also told that the city has this mind made up before this even happened. So why isn't there a referendum where the city of, with citizens of Fruta and, and Glade Park can vote on this? And having been an owner of Cork Nimburs in the past, God, 1986 is when we closed. I know the owners are the people that want to buy this land. I'm sorry, I'm not very trustful. So why are we going to give this to private entities and forget about the public using this? And then I noticed that you said the pipeline was, they discontinued the water lines because of the pipeline being fixed. So will the pipeline be restored so that there will be an outlet? And then one more thing, somebody told me today that was a rumor that the owners that went, or the people that went to buy threatened to drain the lake if they didn't get their way. So have fun trying to decide what's right. And I hope to God that you decide what is right and it's not right to sell. Amen.
Thank you.
All right, Kathleen, you can go ahead and go to the podium. I'll call out Teresa Wilcox.
Hello again. I was here at the meeting.
Didn't want you to be interrupted by the timer. So please.
Now?
Yes, go for it. Phone name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Morrison. I live at 909 Prince Court in Fruta. I've lived there for 15 years and I often go to Enix Lake just to get out of the heat and because it's such a beautiful place. So I was here on the 18th, but I'm not going to say the same things that I said last time. So, so I read all of the emails and attachments to your agenda. And you know, something that bothered me and it was in the memo from the Public Works Director, no offense, and, and your city attorney, which said, "It's inefficient for the city of Fruta to maintain Enix Lake because it is of no value to the city." The city with a capital C, not a small c. And I thought, you know, but there is a value to the people of Fruta. I, I guess it's not a value to the city, capital T, because you don't get income from it. But you also don't get income from Snook's Bottom. And yet you clean the porta potties and you pick up the trash and you do all those things and it's open to the public. So it's a public space and you allow the people to use that and it is a value to the, to the people who walk there every day. The other thing that bothered me was the email from the proposed owners threatening to drain Enix Lake if you didn't sell it to them. I mean, what kind of upstanding citizens are we dealing with here? I mean, that's just shocking to me. And I know it was perhaps in the heat of the moment. I don't know. But just to put that out there, it's, it was shocking to me. So in conclusion, let me just say once again, please, please do not accept this offer. Give the friends of Enix Lake an opportunity, give them a year. If they can't perform, then please put it up for public auction. Make it as open and transparent as you possibly can if, if you do decide to sell it at that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
S. Cook. Will be speaking after Teresa.
My name is Teresa Wilcox. I live at 651 East Carolina Avenue in Fruta, Colorado, 81521. I've been a resident of Fruta for 12 years and I've lived on the western slope of Colorado for almost my entire life. From this perspective, I would like to make my voice heard and let you know that I am extremely opposed to the sale of this land and these water rights. We should know by now, the most precious resource we have in this part of the country is water. It's not gold. It's not silver. It is water. Water is the lifeblood of everything. Without water, you're not going to get anywhere. I hear a lot about, oh, we need to attract businesses to Fruta. We want Fruta to grow. Well, with growth comes the need for water. And so if you get rid of that and maybe we, we won't need these water rights for 20, maybe even 30 years, but how easy will it be to get these water rights back then? Probably almost impossible and at great cost. This water is an investment in our future. As with all investments, there may be a period of time where it costs money before the rewards can be reaped. How would we look at someone who ended their 401K before retirement because it's costing too much money? We would consider that person to be very short-sighted. That is what I consider this move, very short-sighted. One of the things that I have always thought is that I would rather have something and not need it than need it and not have it. And I have worked extremely hard to have a nice yard, plant trees, plant bushes, grass, so that I could enhance the value of my house. And I do not want to see that literally dry up in the future due to lack of water. If the issue is that the city needs money, I have a couple of suggestions for you. The first one is, why not rent or lease the land on water rights but retain ownership? That seems to be the best of both worlds. The other suggestion addresses a different issue that I wish, wish to speak to. How about place patrol officers on East Carolina and Maple and some of the other residential streets in that general area? Ticket anyone going over 10 miles above the speed limit. You will have plenty of money in very short order. There are people that routinely drive motorcycles and cars and they routinely drive through these areas at 50 miles an hour or up. I've seen people going through there recently. They've got to be going 70. So it feels rather unsafe for me to walk my dog along the street when cars are going this fast. If allowed to continue, the quality of life in Fruta will begin to degrade. By enforcing the law, you can generate more revenue for the city and alleviate the need to sell our very precious water rights.
Thank you. Teresa.
I'll ask Deborah Pace to come up while Mr. Cook goes to the podium.
Hello, my name's Steve Cook. I live at 231 East Paper in Fruta, pretty close. I've only been here since about 1976, so it is my town too. And I haven't read any of the emails or referendums or any of that stuff, but I know that Enix Lake is a part of Fruta, just like Fruta reservoirs. All that's all been there since I was a kid. And I have to follow these guys, so I don't really want to touch on the water issues because as a river guide, we all know, we're already writing checks that we can't cash as far as water goes. I don't know if we'll use it or if we won't, but water is precious. You know what I mean? Just a piece of Fruta. We can't get rid of it. If we do, I think it was only fair that we put it up to a vote for the city. So the people that live here and have been going there since the 60s and 70s have a choice in whether we sell it or not. I don't know if that's part of the referendums or emails, but it's a place that's been very dear to a lot of people. And did I hear $500,000 or something? For that big of a property, we should ask a little bit more. So that's all I really got. I don't need three minutes. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for speaking.
Marielle Steele. To the podium, please. And after that will be George Masher. And George is the last person on the list.
Go for it.
Go for it. Thank you. Phone name and address, please.
Start. I'm a super nervous public speaker. I'm going to do my best. So howdy y'all. My name's Marielle Steele. My address is 14390 BS Road. I'm a resident Glade Park. So I also want to start with gratitude. Thank you to the city of Fruta Council members who are allowing me the opportunity to speak today, as well as the last meeting regarding Enochs Lake. I kind of felt like an intruder during the last meeting. I'm not a Fruta resident, but the lake is open to all and your decision will affect us all. On July 18th, many of us spoke about our desire to keep Enochs Lake public use and far more were against the sale than were for it. We asked you for other options. I'm so grateful that you listened to us then and gave us more time to organize amongst ourselves. Okay. Oh, yeah. Great. Thank you. But I'm so happy to announce that as a community, we have done just that. We've held meetings in Glade Park, in Fruta and in Grand Junction. And from those discussions emerged a grassroots organization that Jim Cook spoke of earlier. I am part of that group. We're called Friends of Enochs Lake. And as he said, we are in the process of becoming our 501(c) nonprofit. We've created a website that allows volunteers to sign up and pending approval with the IRS. We can accept donations as well. We have members working on grants and other members who have started the. Process of collaborating with other groups like Colorado Land Trust, for example. Who has shown interest in Enoch's as a public easement in order to keep the land public access for years to come. Our group members are willing and able to step up as stewards of the land. We've submitted a written proposal of our plan by the August fifteenth deadline, which I hope you guys received. We've created online groups and have news articles to help spread awareness and are growing in numbers still. We've accomplished all this in forty days since the July eighteenth meeting. Can you imagine what we can accomplish? Can you imagine what we can accomplish in six months or even a year? That's incredible. I am blown away by our community. Now, I completely understand the why is the city that you guys want out of the responsibility of Enoch's Lake? And I know that some of you have spoken about your memories that you had on Enix, just like the rest of us have. We can keep Enoch's Lake public use. We can allow. Okay, get through it. I'm gonna get through it. We can keep Enoch's Lake public use. We can allow generations to come the same opportunities to create memories that we have all done so far. We do have other options beyond the sale to tipping powers and mer. But in order for us to proceed with those other options, we need you to decline or again postpone. The current offer on the table. And tonight, with great sincerity, I ask you to do just that. I did it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Jerry Martinez will be speaking.
Evening. My name is George Moser. Address is eight forty-nine South sixteen and a half Road, Glade Park. I am also Board of Directors on Guapa. Which is the Glade Park Water Users Association. I just want to add a little bit of information. What I've been hearing about the water line being discontinued. We have not received water out of Enoch for twelve years. The water line is in very bad condition along that line. And that's the reason why we're not using it. The reason why it was taken out of office line is because there was a break in the road. And that's why we took the line apart so that we could seal off where it wouldn't flood out the road. But I've heard people say that, you know, it was. It's one person's idea or whatever. It wasn't. It was a board's director's idea and we got a hold of Fruta, the city. And they agreed that that was the best fix for the thing. The water line from Enoch to our water line is not usable. Period. Not without a bunch of money to replace almost all the line. So I just want you to understand that's the situation there. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you.
And next will be Deborah Moreland after Mr. Martinez.
Jerry Martinez, three seventeen West Otley Avenue, Fruta, Colorado, eight one five two one. Thank you guys for postponing the sale. I'm in agreement with a lot of people that have been up here. There's it seems like there's a lot more options than there was at the at the initial meeting that came to that was beginning of August. That's what we were wanting, that just other options. Hearing that there's not trails within two miles of of that area. You guys have done such a great job on innovation and and making recreation a part of Fruta. Continue. We already own this piece of property. Why not have it? We don't get rid of Alaska just because it's on the other side of Canada because it's a great resource. Just like Enix Lake is to Fruta. Why not incorporate a trail system from Enix Lake all the way out to eighteen Road? Somewhere cooler in the winter, got fall and spring. People want to volunteer and and make this place and and get an LLC going and a nonprofit and everybody's pitching in. We have so many options on the table right now. Not just a sale. But the community is actually involved. The community is here. They keep coming, will continue to come. I just think that with all that, all the opportunities that we have, whether we incorporate it ourselves, build a trail system, whether we. Stop the line there, I'll pay extra if I could just have some of that water coming down because it's it's the best water that we can get. No one's on that line. Nothing's above it. It's not from Veiled, Aspen, anywhere else. That water is clear as heck. And when we got rid of all this stuff and didn't didn't care about what that water right was. Now, how much are we paying weekly for water? I'm around five hundred bucks, you know, between the office and and home. It's it's expensive. If we have that much money to spend, but we are just. Plenty of opportunities where we decided to do something. Commercial. Just keep it as the as the way it is right now. We talked about one point two million it's cost over like twenty years to maintain it. But at the August, the beginning of the August meeting, we okayed seventy-five grand just to check out what land would be down here. That's a whole year of of maintenance up there. I'd much rather vote for that. And and I hope that you guys just realize that how much it means to the town of Fruta. And that you buy us some more time to come up with even more options. And give the city of Fruta a chance to vote on this. It's all of our water. We're finally coming out. It 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 it's a trigger. It's a nerve and it's exposed. And let us vote on it. Let us see whether we want to get rid of it first before we figure out that it's order we're getting rid of. I just think it's more of a city. Issue than just we got a sale and get rid of it. It's a great resource. We can't replace it. And I hope you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Moreland, two fifty-four North Mulberry Street. I spoke previously, but I want to. Add. Urging you to give this more time. I'm speaking as a city of Fruta citizen and I know that. You're oh, this is over and above what a city council should have to do. Or a city staff. But it is historically something that Fruta has hung on to this long. And I know that it took a while for. It to get the kind of attention where you're getting, you know, public active activity on it. And I think that to now, as long as it's gone on to just not give that some time to develop. Would be a shame. And the other thing is, I actually agree with Vera. I was going to mention that. Why not put it, do you, okay, the citizens of Fruta are your constituents, right? Do you know, do you have a good feel for how the citizens of Fruta actually feel on this issue? I suppose it's not a big deal to a lot of them. But do you know, are you going to do something that you don't know what? You know, I think it should be a ref put to a referendum to the citizens of Fruta. And find out whether they feel that this is important as a. A resource to hang on to. Or whether they feel like the the business decision is that you should. Definitely get rid of it so that you can focus on your core issues and everything. But I think that it needs a little more time for that to play out. This isn't the only offer you're going to get. And and if they're really interested. And later on, it turns out that you will entertain another one. You know, the public auction thing. There's there's a lot of things that. The value of the water, you know, the price doesn't seem to reflect the value of the water, the value of the property. So I don't think that you have to rush to a decision here. As a citizen of Fruta, I'm asking you, give it some time. Okay?
Thanks, Deb. Thank you.
Frank Cardova.
Thank you all. I I don't envy being in that spot, but as a teacher, I kind of get it. I mean, I get a lot of angry looks at eight AM in the morning.
For the record, please state your name and.
Oh, sorry. Frank Cardoza, thirteen seventy-nine seventeen and a half Road. I was actually. I I was born in Fruta, just down the street at the hospital. After I was born, I think they said that was enough of that. So if you had to have school train ups, that was probably, oh, is that that seal your lines? And I actually had a couple of classes in this very building, right across the hallway. I was in third grade, one of my best classes ever. Miss Lindsay taught math and. Made me think I was pretty good at multiplication, so maybe that's what helped me get into teaching. So anyways. You know, I remember going to Enoch's Lake and all the other lakes around this area as a child and it was. Moments you can never, I mean, just irreplaceable. And I I don't have kids, but I know if I had kids, I'd be wanting to take them to Enoch Lake, you know, and. We always called it Enoch Lake. I I realize it was Enoch's now, but. I think about that and then I think about what about your kids' kids as well, you know? This is something that. It's it's not just some little pond somewhere that people can't get to. It's it's a beautiful lake and. You know, if if we get rid of Enoch's. Through the reservoir number one next, number two, you know? How many other fruit assets are we going to get rid of? Yeah. So thank you all.
Thank you. See, we had somebody else sign up.
Melanie Martinez is the last one on the list.
Melanie Martinez, five oh eight East Paper Avenue. I did speak last time and I just want to say thank you. For to Amy Miller for answering my questions in a very well-written email. And I also pumped into her and the community and we had a great conversation and I know that you guys have a very tough decision ahead of you. But I think just. The work that Mr. Cook has done alone would grant it more time for this. And the one thing I I had no intentions on getting up tonight until I heard the word transparency. And although you did a great job answering the questions, the one that I still have a question about is when were the open meetings? Because. Everything that I saw was executive meetings and you sent me a link and I clicked on it and I watched those videos. And every time Enoch Lake came up, the video paused. So my question is, you guys have had the best outcome that I heard last time that you guys have had at a city council meeting in quite some time. So I just think it would be really important for our community if you gave this more time and see who else would come out in support of this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'm assuming there's nobody else that has signed up?
That's correct.
So once again, if anybody would like to speak, now is the time to do so. Once again, please state your full name and address.
First names are, my whole name is Everett Sedelo. I live here in Fruta, two ten South Sicomar. I got two properties here in Fruta. I got a property up at Glade Park. And I played, just like everybody else, paid a lot of taxes. And. I'd be willing as a taxpayer. If I'm sure it's been looked at, an assessment. To pay for. As as one means to pay for maintenance. For Enix Lake. And I don't say that lightly. I think. But that's how important it is. I want to thank you for having this meeting. The other thing is, I firmly believe that. If all possible. This is really a big decision. And I'm sure it weighs on you guys quite heavy. I would suggest. Put it up for a referendum. And let the people of Fruta, the citizens of Fruta decide. And any other option. I applaud the all the ideas of volunteerism and. I could say through the years in the past. I've used to go to Enix Lake. Well, I so do. And I used to pick up trash from people that have not very good ethics, unfortunately. But there's a lot of people like me, sportsmen, men and women. Other way to pick up, I usually come back with fortified trash. And I went down to the maintenance shop before the new director down there, the older gentleman, I forgot his name. I had a mattress, my truck was full of trash for me. And he told me, you know, Everett, you have to use the dumpster for that stuff. But I'm sure there was a lot of people like me. Volunteering that were on. Didn't say, you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Once again, I want to make sure, we want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak and get heard. So if there's anybody else that would like to speak at this time, please come on up. Once again, I'll sound like a broken record. Full name, full address, please.
Deborah Martinez, two thirty-one Palo Verde Court, Fruta, Colorado. I just wanted to talk, we were, the last time we were looking at some numbers and talking about how much it costs to maintain Enoch Lake. But after this ended, there was two more forums, open forums about Enoch and the property or the properties up on Glade Park. That Fruta does have in the sale of those. Those prices I do not believe were taken out, but if we're looking at options to be able to have money for Enoch. I think that there were just a lot of options presented tonight, options that we have in the pamphlet and the agenda tonight. And just a lot of different ways to be able to keep this for us, at least for a little bit of time longer than forty days. So I just ask you guys really keep all of it in mind and keep everyone's thoughts in mind. Thank you.
I thank you. Once again, we want to make sure everybody that wants to speak has the opportunity to do so. Because once we close it to public participation. We'll bring it back to council for discussion and then vote. So last opportunity. All right, with that, I'm going to close public participation and bring it back to council. So first of all, thank you, everyone. All right. I've got questions. I'm sure others do.
I just want to. Some of the comments has been about transparency and I just want to say. That Tuesday nights, this room is mostly those people and us people. So we've talked about Enix Lake and mountain properties a lot. It's hard to engage people. We've sent out all sorts of city links and messaging. And it's hard to reach people when they, when there's nothing at stake. So whatever happens tonight, engagement is important. We've been talking about this a lot. It's been obvious to, before any of these people on council, that this was something that needed taking care of. Every council has said, I'm not touching that one. I'm not touching that one. I'm not touching that one. They all knew. That needed to be dealt with, but they wouldn't do it. Because they knew that there's a lot of sentiment about the lake. I feel it. I have a lot of sentiment about the lake. A lot of people pointed out that. We were sort of accepting this backdoor offer that we didn't talk to anybody and. We've been talking to people for years. It's a liability to the lake and a lot of people don't want to take that on. It doesn't make a lot of sense for most people to buy a lake like that. So we got this offer and we've been talking about it forever, so it made sense to consider it. I don't think any of us intended to. Take this sneaky backdoor offer and and sell the property without talking to anybody. We were trying to solve a problem that the city first had for a long time and leaders have been avoiding dealing with it. So we need to commend these people for dealing with it. With that being said. I I do feel bad. I do feel bad that this property wasn't, they didn't go through the normal process to be put up for sale. I feel, even though we didn't intend to do that, we didn't follow a process to make that happen. I do feel a little. Like. We didn't put this out for sale, just like a normal property goes for sale. That's been weighing on my mind since we had the last meeting. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask a couple of questions for clarification. So. Mary Elizabeth, if you can refresh my memory about the water rights and what. The city of Fruta has in terms of senior water rights, junior water rights, and what that means in actuality. For us to ever be able to use those water rights would be appreciated.
Sure. So City of Fruta, as many of you have talked about tonight and understand, does own Enix Lake. Fruta reservoirs one, two, and three up on the Mesa up on Glade Park. Just for everybody's edification, Fruta reservoir number two has been under a no fill order for years now because the dam is in such disrepair. It can't be filled. So those water rights, the city, those water rights were not enough water. those water rights were not enough water to provide potable water to the city of Fruta by nineteen eighty-three. Um, and at that point, the city's population, I believe, and Kimberly can probably correct me, was around, was just under four thousand. Um, what? Thirty-six hundred. So um, and there was, there had been a pipeline constructed from Fruta reservoirs one, two, and three um, down to the city of Fruta through the Colorado Monument back in the early nineteen hundreds. That pipeline doesn't exist anymore. Um, and there is probably no way, I'm not the federal government, so I guess I can't totally speak to this, but I I do know from working with the federal government, that's pretty much an impossibility to reconstruct. Uh, maybe the cost would be astronomical and the amount of water available is not enough to serve a city that is now twenty thousand? Fourteen thousand, thank you. Um, those water rights in Enix, then to just back up a little more, the water rights in Enix Lakes, my understanding, the lake was constructed earlier, but the water rights were not decreed, I don't believe, until the forties. Um, and I apologize, I don't have that decree right in front of me. And it was decreed for domestic livestock and livestock watering and irrigation. Um, so it's actually not decreed for municipal use. I know that sounds weird, but from a water perspective, um, you know, water rights are decreed for very specific uses. The state holds you to those uses. You, and so if you want to expand or change a use, you have to go back to water court. So these water rights weren't adjudicated until the forties, means they're actually pretty junior. Um, which is just another thing to factor in as far as their value, but I think the biggest, um, and then to back up even just a step further, when the city of Fruta um, stopped being the potable water provider for the city, it entered into agreement with Ute Water Conservancy District to be that potable water provider in nineteen eighty-three. And Ute Water Conservancy District holds a right of first refusal on all of Fruta's water rights, which means if Fruta gets an offer, they have to first give it to Ute Water to decide if they want to purchase it or not. The Ute Water Board received a copy of this offer. They they didn't want to purchase it. They can't use the water either. So water rights are super important. I'm a water attorney, actually the other part of my time and, but sometimes water, just because it's water, it might not be valuable to the, in this case, the city of Fruta for use in this instance beyond recreation, which to be honest, it's not even decreed for. So I just, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but I could get in the weeds.
We have junior, we don't have senior water rights, we have junior water rights. So.
What? I'm I'm sorry.
So we don't, we have junior water rights. So in case of a drought or something like that, we don't get first call, correct?
These could be called out. I and I haven't, these are actually tributary to the Gunnison River. There is a trans basin diversion. I I mean, I could really get in the weeds. So. Yes, I mean, the the answer is yes, these would be called. I'm sorry, we can't, that wasn't the question, that wasn't the question. Yeah.
I'm asking about, you know, we have the junior rights, so if there is a call.
Yes.
We don't actually have first call on that water.
That's correct.
The likelihood, if, even if we could get the water down, we would not have the water available to us.
It would go to the first.
It would go to the more senior priorities first and then depending on what happened to be left.
Okay.
Might be something.
Senior priorities are welcome to the full rights.
That's correct. I mean, if a senior places a call, they get, they're entitled to their full amount to the.
That's not us.
Nineteen forty-one would not be the first right on the Gunnison River. I don't know the first right, but I'm sure there are a lot of irrigation rights that are from the late eighteen hundreds.
And I may not have the correct number, but that's full rights on the two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty acre feet of water.
Say that again?
That would be, they'd have first right on all the water.
Well, that.
I mean, I know we can't get the water.
It it's two different things. There's water that's stored in the reservoir to the size of two hundred and forty acre feet. There is a water right that fills the reservoir. So that water right that fills the reservoir would be stopped. And so you'd be able to use whatever was in the bucket at that time and then it'd be done. You wouldn't be able to put any more water in.
Thank you for the clarification. I don't want to hog the.
Okay, um, I am curious about um, our current liability um, as owners right now. Um, if a fire happened, if someone drowned in the lake, those sorts of things, what, what what does, what liabilities that cause the city in that regard?
Um, I mean, two, I guess, two different things. If there's a fire, it depends on how a fire starts. Um, you know, if the fire is human caused or lightning caused, um.
Let's presume it is human caused.
If it's human caused, I mean, the liability, you're going to need, yes, I mean, there arguably could be liability to the city. The city does have the Governmental Immunity Act and has some protection under that. Um, however, if the city is um, negligent in its maintenance and that's then causes, you know, the accident, then um, that protection can go away. Um, I, following the water line uh, of of conversation, can you speak to um, who is using that water and how they, how we're compensated for that? Sure, um, and I might look to Kimberly to help me out some on this. Um, so Ron Tipping, um, the city entered into an agreement with him in twenty thirteen, uh, because the Enix Lake Dam as well as the dam at Reservoir One needed repair. Uh, Mr. Tipping provided assistance in getting those repairs done. Uh, so in exchange, um, the city has a non-monetary obligation to him to, you know, repay that work and that, as part of that, he's entitled to up to one hundred acre feet per year um, out of Enix Lake. And is he the only user on that? And there is also, um, Stan Muir has uh, an agreement with the city to pay if he wants to use water and he pays per acre foot, I believe, if he um, uses water. Uh, and you know. So shh, if if they uh, for some reason decided to use all of their water rights, would that drain the lake? No, not based upon those numbers, no. Thank you. Um, just from reading, I I read that public comment. I I know Kimberly's standing up. I read that public comment as well and I just, I believe it to be inaccurate based upon the agreements that we have. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and and that's correct. Um, I would also say that the water that feeds the Glade Park Pipeline is city water that we are not compensated for, but they, they have a um, structure in place where they, if someone wants a new tap, it goes to the Glade Park Water Association so that they can reinvest that in maintenance and providing water.
So they they do maintain?
They maintain some of the pipeline. Um, and then we maintain the reservoirs and have that agreement with them.
Okay, but there is no other compensation for that water use. Okay, thank you. Um, several people have have mentioned or suggested turning it into a place um, that people pay to access, specifically um, reopening the campground. How many sites were like possible there? Do we, do we know how many were set up when we?
I believe it was eight sites.
Would, would there be space for more?
I think it would depend on like cutting trees down and 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 the the width of the property line along the, around the lake. But yeah, there could be other opportunities. I believe it was, I believe it was eight de- like designated spaces with, you know, uh, uh, like a fire pit and those types of things.
Um, I also wanted to clarify something just as we're discussing these things for this offer and for future offers. Um, Colorado is a huge fair housing uh, anti-discrimination state. We were actually the first to enact anti-discrimination laws before anybody else, so, which is pretty fantastic. So I want to clarify that we weren't, we're not going to be discriminating against any buyers based on, there have been some very specific things. Um, but we're not going to be looking at their race, their gender, or their socio-economic standing um, among, gosh, there's like thirty protected classes now that that um, Colorado recognizes, so. We need to keep that in mind. I think that's all I have for right now.
So Amy, I got a question for you in terms of clarification. If I wanted to put an offer on a piece of property, this or any other piece of property, I can put an offer in at any given time with contingencies on it. So I don't have to have, I mean, in theory, I don't have to have my financing lined up. I don't have to have my insurance lined up. I don't have to have all my ducks in a row. I could put an offer, say I'm going to put an offer for this much money and it's contingent on me being able to make sure I can finance it and the inspection and, you know. And my reference is, you know, residential housing, but I'm assuming it's
Sure.
Buyer clearly wants to make sure you have the financing and everything else, but in order to place an offer in, you do not have to have all those things in place.
Correct.
Okay.
Would your offer be very strong? Um, no, I guess if I was talking to you about submitting on and I would say we need to get those things in a line first. However, no, they're not required. Like you could most definitely say, here's my plan. Here are, we would set very strict dates and deadlines, saying here's when this will happen by, here's when this will happen by. Um, so that, you know, we weren't just having this open-ended agreement um, while you try to get your in a row. But yeah, there's nothing, there's absolutely nothing.
Okay.
Can I have clarification of the acreage that we're talking about, please?
Sure, the the acreage is fifty-one acres.
Fifty-one acres.
There's two hundred and forty acre feet of water.
Which is not acreage.
Is not acreage, no.
Thank you.
That's a volumetric.
Yep.
Of the water.
Yeah, and how much of the acreage, the fifty-one acres, is covered in water? Do we have that estimate or not? How much of it is lake, I guess, is what I'm asking.
That's a good question.
The majority. Okay, thank you.
Are there any buildable sites? Like, could you build on any of that? I'm pretty sure it's all in a floodplain and if you could even have enough, but I don't know. That would be a Mesa County question. I don't know. I have been up there. Um, you know, but I don't know where the property line is on the far side of the lake, for instance. There's not a lot of property on that. So. Yeah, I know, there's not much. So um, it's been suggested by, you know, a few individuals that there might be plans to put a lot of buildings up there and I don't see that being possible. So I just wondered if anybody.
I have a couple of things. Um, Ken, I want to just, I think I need to add, I want to make sure we have clear what you said before. Um, because I don't think you had the intent. You don't feel that we, the, you don't feel that the process we did was illegal. It's my understanding that it was legal, you just don't appreciate the process that has taken, you'd like a little more transparency in the process, even though the existing process has been legal.
Um, yeah, I should have been more clear, sorry. I I sort of feel bad that the way it unfolded, and nobody intended for it to unfold that way. It it looks like, why didn't you offer this to anybody? And it's like.
It's been up for ten, I mean, we've been, it's been, we've been having this.
It's been, yes.
The idea that any public member could have made this offer for
At any time.
The last twenty, or well, ever since nineteen forty, whenever it was established from the very beginning. This, that some, anyone could have offered it, but it wasn't like put a sign in the ground, this is for sale.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of people ask that and because we took this, you know, long winding road to the outcome that we're here tonight, we didn't put that sign at the ground and if I could go back and do it, that's what I would have done. Okay, before we.
I just want to.
Nothing illegal. I I think everything we've done.
We follow the board. I want to make sure that the public knows that we follow legal processes that we can do. We, then that if we sell future property, that we might do it differently due to the experience.
That's a discussion for outside of this. Like, we can't, this meeting is not to talk about in the future if we want to.
No, 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 I'm just making sure that it's like, ultimately, it's just we we followed legal process. Um.
Uh, Councilman Hensley, if I just might jump in and, and I appreciate the clarification, but yes, I mean, this, you know, the charter allows you to sell or convey property by ordinance. So the process for this was, there was an offer received, like I said, in this instance, because it involved water, it first went to the Ute Water Conservancy District for them to say whether or not they wanted to purchase it. If they had said they wanted to purchase it, we would not be having this conversation. They decided they did not want to purchase it, so then, you know, we published the ordinance for first reading. That was the hearing in, um, well, that was the first reading was actually back in June.
Yeah.
Um, then we had the second reading, July eighteenth continued to tonight. Um, so just.
In essence, it's it's been public for two months.
Correct. Can you clarify what um, one of the speakers uh, referenced about the the video being paused when we went, when we would talk about Enix Lake? If there's an, and actually, I guess I have not gone back and like watched a meeting to understand if this happens, but if there is an executive session because that is not public, the public video that is posted is paused because, you know, it's it's in an executive session. Um, after any executive session, there can be open discussion um, about an item that was talked about in executive session. Sometimes that happens, sometimes that doesn't. So.
Um, just.
It depends on the reasons for the executive session as well.
Uh, I just.
And yes, thank you, Mike. Mike's giving me some good legal advice. Um, and and of course, no, you know, no decisions can be made in executive session. You could not have made a decision to sell this property or any property in an executive session.
Thus, we're here tonight.
Correct.
Um, just to, I want to ask this uh, again, the water rights that we have at Enix Lake only is non-potable water rights that are for storage only, not really use?
No, no, they they're decreed for domestic livestock watering and irrigation.
Common livestock, okay.
Yes, it would, it would of course have to be treated before it could be.
Yeah, but so the the, with the water, really, it's just we have junior rights is the, is the challenge which is secondary, I think, far second to the number one issue, which is financially getting it to our city limits even use it, which is pretty much insurmountable because of the monument.
I I believe there are three, three things. One, it's even with all of the reservoirs up there, it's not enough water to serve the city.
Correct.
Um, two is, you know, the exorbitant price plus the potential legal um, roadblocks to getting it through the monument. And then three, they are junior water rights. Um, that once you start back up at the top with not enough water, then become even less water.
Um. Over these many years, as like Ken was alluding to, we've talked to the county in past and present and there's been no desire for the county to that, that they want this property and take over, take over ownership and life.
It just, uh, let me, before you jump in, Mike, you know, that's as kind of, as I was going through all this with my notes, you know, for the past decade, like decade probably plus, people have known that we've, this is not a piece of property that we want to hold on to. The county's known it, the Forest Service has known it, the BLM has known it. And I know there's been conversations in the past and nobody, I mean, there's been opportunities for those organizations to step up or step in and say, yes, we like this. And nobody has come forth in over a decade to do so.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Um, Kimberly, how often are we sending our VAC truck up there?
Um, you you know, we. It probably varies. Um, there was an arrangement with the Forest Service that they would haul trash while we would pump the toilets and that has somewhat waned over the years. Um, we go up at least once towards the end of the season, but there are times where if we know that those need to be pumped out, we'll send it up there.
And I, I think to clarify what waned means, just to be a little more specific, is that the Forest Service agreed to do trash. This is many years ago. We've learned about it just looking, looking back through the records and talking with the Forest Service and we agreed to send the VAC truck up and suck out the, the, the toilet.
To send the VAC truck up and suck out the 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 toilets. Um, within a year of that agreement over a decade ago, the Forest Service said, we just can't do the trash anymore. But Fruta continued to do both trash and and suck out the, it's not, we shouldn't be sending that back truck up there. Um, that that's not, I mean, that's a over a half million dollar piece of equipment that is in town being used every day with the sewer system. It's not necessarily meant for that. Um, but that's, so the Forest Service has has told us. Um, and even recommended pulling the toilets out of Enik. We've just continued to have them there uh during the time we've owned it and had it open to the public.
And I would add that I I think. Years previous, we were. John's given me information that we would go up three times a week to do that. I think past councils have suggested minimizing the amount of. Time that we're spending up there in the maintenance of these properties, and that's why you've seen that decline over the years.
So how often are we sending people up for trash?
Again, we probably go up once a month and we take readings, we do observations of the reservoirs and the dams, and then we're taking trash out.
Uh, that significantly decreased when we changed from overnight camping to. Uh, day use. When we were, the last year, we were, we had overnight camping. We were sending crews up three times a week with continued complaints that we were not keeping up with the trash. And those things, but that, once it went to day use, it it significantly decreased as far as the amount of daily trips or the amount of trips up there. Far from daily.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um. Steph, have we received any offers?
No, since the, since the last hearing, we did receive, and Mary Elizabeth could clarify, but we have had. Um, I know of some pub- public record requests, official record requests for. Uh, detailed information from a, uh, at least one attorney's office that was representing somebody interested in purchasing. We don't know who, but. Um, we provided all those documents, all the details, all the, all the things you have to do with the state, the 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 dam safety engineer, the water commissioner, all those types of things, the liability. Pieces that come with it, every piece of information they asked, records we had, we, we submitted, though, we have to submit um public record requests within uh three days.
Gotcha. So we've had people.
But we did not receive an an offer.
So during this eight weeks of it being open and in public, knowing that their other proposals could come in, we've had some inquiries, but nothing come from that.
Correct.
James.
Kinda, I.
Yes.
One more. Uh, what would, Mike, a partnership, like if we did partner with um friends of Enik Lake, what would that look like typically? Like from a, because I'm sure that we're not the only municipality that would consider something like that.
Sure, I think, I think for, you know, we have a, we have a great partnership with Glade Park Water Users Association, for example. Um, in two thousand and seven, just to use this as an example and kind of come back to your, to your question. We had, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we held a a public open house. We'd put an article out to the residents. We had a public open house on the Friday of. Mike, that was Chicken Festival leading into it for the. Um, it was filled with people from Glade Park, um, and then we had quite a few residents that came through. Uh, we had uh timelines of everything that's gone on with all the mountain properties in there. We had um about six to eight staff answering questions. Uh, the, the invite and everything that that was dealing with it was letting people know, again, as it had been let known over the years, as you had. Stated, even long before all of us that either work for the city or on council. Um, you know, it'd been a goal of what to do because there's, there's not a, the original purpose was no longer and would never be. Uh, so, uh, the. You know, we, that, that led to working closer, and I think that that caused a little bit of fear with the Glade Park Water Users Association, because. It's kind of like, are we gonna lose, you know, the the ability? Um, they stepped up at at that point in time and said, let us do more maintenance on the line, because the city was trying to spend less. On maintenance uh up there. Uh, and so that's been a good partnership. Uh, we, we've, we, we work with uh the the association. They take care of some of the maintenance of the line. What's different about Enik Lake is a partnership, I I think it's wonderful what what Jim Cook has done. I I, we're pretty impressed with. The website, impressed with all the volunteers. Um, it doesn't take away any of our liability from the standpoint of what we are held liable from as a city. Uh, with the state, volunteers can't re- replace that. They can definitely help with more eyes on the property. They can help with some of the the maintenance. I think what gets confusing in some of the public discussion is when the city says, this is, this is not a, the the city's not in financial. Uh, we do, we we have healthy fund balances. We are uh focused on our priorities within the city. Um, this is not about money. It's uh, and you know, the process has been completely transparent, because the only process there is when you have. An offer to consider is this, the ordinance process to put it through, uh, which we've done. Um, even if we put a for sale sign in the ground, the first offer that comes in, if you want to consider it, you've got to do this. Because that's the only way the city can publicly discuss, the only type of way you can discuss it. And make public decisions. So I think uh what's been a little bit of confusing, and from my opinion, in in the public discussion. Are some of these co- our comments of, is this about money or what the value is, or the liability, the liability and the 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 burden on the city as an organization in the future. Is is purely coming from. When jurisdictional dams have failures like Reservoir Two, those are multimillion dollar expenses. Um, and we have to, we're already wrestling with what to do with Reservoir Two. Um, those have, they've, they've happened in the past with Enik, which is why we've had to put um money in the past. They've happened with Reservoir One, they've happened with Reservoir Three, and they will happen over time. Um, in addition to any of the other liability, which. Is why we have liability insurance, insurance and those types of things. So it's difficult for us to look beyond that piece. There could be a wonderful help from volunteers for certain things, but we can't rely on to meet our obligations to say, I don't know if you want to add to that, Kimberly.
No, I, the only thing I would add is that, like Mike said, it it's not the money. Issue, other than the required maintenance and ongoing expenses of taking care of these properties. And investing minimal amounts just means those properties aren't being taken care of, probably at the level they need to be. But it also is taking resources out of the core of the city that have plenty of work to do in the city, providing services to the community. You know, it's one thing, I mean, it's an hour drive just to get there. And then uh when we were doing daily monitoring for Reservoir Two, that was an everyday trip that took one or two of our guys. Out of service for the, providing services to the city. To go up there and and take those readings and monitor the dam, so. It it's, it's a staffing issue and and currently we are understaffed because we can't fill positions. Um, so it it's just kind of the ongoing challenges that we have.
Thank you.
Well, uh, I think it's, it's worth noting that. Um. I think the reason why uh I hear many of you saying the city has talked about this for many years. I mean, I've been here nine years uh in this role, uh, but going back through history, you can see the goals of city councils since, you know, for. Um, Margaret Sell, who were, who's worked here for forty two years, um, you know, remembers it being a goal and uh from city councils. That entire time, and you can look back at, and not a goal to sell, I I want to be clear, a goal to, what what do we do? What do we do? What's next for these properties now that we? Are um in contract with Ute Water. Um, I do want to clarify that uh. We are in contract with Ute Water to have, and we have. Uh, available, not just the amount of water we need now, but the wa- amount of water we will need as the city. Grows to full capacity, just like we are at half capacity with uh our sewer system. Uh, growth does not get approved if you don't already have all those things at play. It's not a, you don't do that secondary. You don't. Allow growth to occur. We have a future growth use map. Um, it's been, it's been, it's actually been uh. The city council a couple of years ago brought it in to to make it smaller than what it had been for two or three decades. Um, so infrastructure is built ahead of time, it's secured ahead of time, uh, otherwise we are not able to approve that type of growth. Um, different from on Glade Park. Glade Park is a, um, this Mesa County in their, in their plans has designated it and. Over, um, I I'm trying to think of the wording, it's over. Overutilized water, there's not enough water, but they continue to allow development. Uh, to occur, and you have to have thirty five acres to have a well, or you have to go to water court to petition. Um, because there's not enough water up there, but in the city of Fruta, it's different. We, we have to make sure that's available, so we have that secured for the future. Um, because this, we can't rely on this water, because it's not possible to bring it to the city. The water that we do receive from Ute Water is from the Grand Mesa. It's first used water, so it's not used by anybody else before it comes into the city of Fruta, so. I I just, I know those are concerns people have, but they're, they're, they're covered in a different, in a different way with with we do have.
Thank you.
Uh, can I, I'm gonna ask a question about liability. Um. So. The group is put together, we'll be putting together. Uh, I know it's a tax designation, but a five oh one C for this, and if we were to. Do a partnership or whatever agreement with them in terms of helping to maintain the property, to look out for the property. God forbid, somebody up there drowns. What then happens to the liability on that? Because we have partnered with that five oh one, do they now pick up that liability? Or is this a kind of an esoteric?
The volunteers drown, or has in serious injury of any.
Yeah, or some, yeah.
But what's that?
I just didn't understand what happens to our liability, their liability.
Sure, uh, so first off, I want to say, I mean, I I I know we have proposals, you know, there, and there have been, you know, a lot of work done by folks to come up with proposals, but. Remember, the hearing is on the ordinance that's in front of you. And whether or not you're going to adopt that. If you choose not to, then we move to the next stage, which is. What, where to go next? So I just want to, you know, focus.
Thank you.
Um, and then in answer to your question, it would depend on what the agreement says. And I'm not trying to be flippant, but that would be something that you would have to, you know, you'd want to address within the agreement. Um, you know, if that five oh one C three is taking on all liability um or not. Uh, so that would be something.
Is that a thing, though? Is that?
Yeah, for.
That's a possibility.
In, in different scenarios with the city, when we. Partner with groups, we require a certain level of insurance that they hold to, you know, whether it's a instructor for a class at a, you know, you know, for. Our programs or whatever it may be.
Go in a agreement with the five oh one seat.
If we're contracting another group, even people to do construction for the city, we require a certain level, um, a minimum level of insurance that they hold. Uh, that they would have to hold, otherwise, um, we might as well be doing it if we're holding that insurance.
And I think a bigger question would be the dam and that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't know, I guess.
It's an overall.
I mean, there'd be, there's so many levels, and it's really hard to opine as to what that agreement would look like, and I, that is really not a conversation.
I appreciate that's outside.
We would move into that conversation if we decided to not move forward with this ordinance.
You could.
Okay.
If I may, just to go back to the answer I was given earlier, um, because some of those questions were raised. Um, over the years, you know, I I mentioned the open house, but there's been articles, someone mentioned City Link. For those that are in the audience that may not be aware, that's something that's mailed to every residence. Um, uh, in hard copy, so there's been, there's been a, at least, there's been some articles and and recently, I think at the end of last year, then we've had the website going. Uh, that, you know, since that article, but there's been articles in previous years, just about, not saying, uh, selling it, but again, talking about, we're trying to figure out what to do. Uh, most of the time when people read those, you know, we would get some comments, oh, because it's, it's very. You know, seeing what, how the city can get out of it and work with someone else. Um, it was brought up earlier and I I didn't quite answer it, but. Um, during, at least during the nine years I've been here, we've had numerous conversations with US Forest Service, with uh Colorado Parks and Wildlife. With the Bureau of Land Management, uh, we, I mean, Matthew and I just recently had a uh a conversation with. With county representatives, because anything we do with all these properties has an impact on. Um, county residents that are not in the city of Fruta very directly. Um, so we want to make sure that, you know, they're following along, and if they have interest in things like that. Now, they've never put it before the Board of County Commissioners, so we can't speak for them, but there's never been an interest to even go to that level. Um, Glade or Enik has been much more difficult with all those agencies because it's surrounded by private land, so. While there's an interest in seeing it stay public, nobody wants to take on the liability for it to remain public. The others that are on US Forest Service property, we've gotten a little more traction, but even then, we've offered to. I mean, we have made, we have told these agencies, we would give them the, so it's not a money thing, we would. We would, can we donate these lakes to one of these uh entities so that they. Could take it on and maintain that public and still no takers for those, even the three that are on US Forest Service property. The US Forest Service has not agreed for us to donate to them, so it, it's, it's complex. It's not, um, it's not overlooked. We've. Sought numerous grants for Reservoir Two, because we have that dam that needs to be repaired. Um, and in doing that, as we've. Contacted all these different potential, you know, funding sources, um, we've struggled to even find, you know, how. You could connect that repair to the the reason they give, they give money out. Hence why we're doing the, we did get the uh the grant from the federal government to do a study on. One, two, and three from the NRCS study that we're waiting the results for, but even with that, not Enik, just one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Um, the process that we followed for this offer that we received, um. To go through the ordinance, first reading, second reading, is it the same thing we would go through if if we put up for sale and got off?
It is, but it is, because the only way you can consider an offer that comes from anyway, whether just someone makes an offer, whether it's on the market or not. Or makes, or, you know, if they, if if you put a for sale sign and they make an offer, you have to. So, do a first reading like we did in June, calling for a public uh hearing a month later, which was July eighteenth. And then it's the ordinance process to allow people to participate and and make that, make that decision, so. Yes, it would be the same, and by continuing from July eighteenth all the way until August twenty ninth. Um, you know, everybody that had become involved in that point in time also knew, similar to putting a sign out. That there's an opportunity to put a for sale sign on. I think, as discussed earlier. When you make an offer, you, it's contingent upon due diligence, and then you have the opportunity to do due diligence, um, to help. To see if that offer's gonna go through or to see if there's a, you can get into contract or whatever that may be.
And just to add to that, uh, if, if there's any offer that does involve city water rights, it first has to go to Ute. So even if you had put a, you know, if there'd been a for sale sign and you'd gotten three offers. You know, you still gets that first opportunity as to whether or not it wants to purchase um the water rights.
Each time, and we would go through three different, or then. Three different.
No, I mean. Um.
Like if three.
Three different ones, I mean, you know, really, I would look at that as. You know, the highest one is probably the one you'd go through first, but I did actually ask you, you water um attorney, if. You guys decided not to move forward with this ordinance and the city received another offer on Enix, if it was higher. Would they want to see it again? You know, because in my mind, if they said no, when it was, you know, at this price, would they want to? And they said, yes, they would want to see it again and decide whether or not they wanted to purchase it. Um, so. Um. That's, that is part of the pro, that is part of the process, if there are water rights involved.
In our discussions we've had over the years, did we ever talk to Ute Water about? Just taking it?
Yes, that was, that was something, uh, it's been quite a few years, but we, we, we specifically met with them, knowing they have First Right of Refusal, they're a Conservancy District. They manage dams, they manage many lakes like this. Um, so we, we actually hoped and and tried to see if they would take it, but similar to what. Mary Elizabeth said earlier, it's tributary to the Gunnison, it, they don't have a way to. Um, to have a meaningful way to get the water to where they would need it for their system, so. Um, they have not had interest in, and that was, that was bringing all the lakes, not the, again, until this offer on Enik alone. It's always been discussed as all the properties, mountain properties, mountain water, water rights. Um, so the city's always looked at them all together in all these discussions until this offer, and then we've, this has narrowed it to, are we considering? The offer that came for Enik alone, but. Yes, in the past, for all the lakes or any of the lakes, we have tried to see if they would have an interest, and they have not.
Yeah, and I think that's. Part of where, you know, I'm coming from with that history, that we've. Sort of been begging people to take this liability off, and then here we get an offer, it's like, oh, hey, so, yeah. Here we are.
Thank you for sharing that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and and. Well, and and keep in mind, and I think it's, 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 I think it's helpful to know for the public that the only way you can actually talk about it and consider an offer is by doing this. Um, you can have an executive session to receive legal advice from your attorney on what to do, who says, well, if you want to consider the offer, you can't make that decision tonight, you have to do an ordinance process, and that's what you did. So the only a way to actually, whether you want it or not, so there's no predetermining if you want it or not, it's if we want to talk as a group, we can't meet outside of a public meeting, a- as, as you know. So you have to set this ordinance process to actually talk about it, whether you accept it or not. Otherwise, you don't, you don't even consider it, right?
Aaron, do you have any other questions at this time? Amy?
Exhausted my list.
Ann?
And I guess I'd like to just know where everybody's at um, with this, and I don't know if anybody, me personally, I I have a lot of nuanced opinions about this, but I still am convinced that the city has no business in the faraway lake business. Um, it's, it's not something that we, we can't continue down the road owning these. It just, it's a no win situation for us. Um, I'd be amenable to other options besides this, but um, right now, this is what we're looking at. So um, I don't know what, how everybody else feels.
I'm super. In general, my personality in general is to try to find the balance. And so thus, this is a very, a a topic that uh, causes a person to be torn. Um, and that's exactly where I'm at right now. I I see all the logic of why the city, all the difficulties that it has caused for all the years, and why it makes a lot of sense to not own these properties and this property um, any longer. Um, yeah, on the flip side, all of these people's opinions are super, super important and valuable, and each of you bring valid points to us that need to be considered. Um, then I'm going to flip on the other side and say, while all of your opinions are super important, it's actually a representation of, I mean, the actual people that we've heard from is a very small percentage of the entire population of the citizens of Fruta who voted for all of us to come up here and make these difficult decisions. Um, but then lastly, on another point, I also hesitate to make a decision on something when there are really invested citizens in a scenario that might very likely be able to come up with super creative um solutions that we haven't yet been able to think of. And I've been in situations where as a citizen of Fruta, I think I could have saved this city maybe a lot of money. I had, like, a group of citizens' opinions um, been asked for first. So again, they're, they're all out in the, in the open is my thought process for you, asking where we stand, and for all of you wanting to know. You know, so I, I, I'm really one, it's difficult.
Um, you brought up that this passionate group represents a small percentage of the city of Fruta, which sort of brings up the idea of that that has some people brought up about putting it out to a vote. Um, I personally think that that would not solve our problem. It would be in the same spot because there's and if I was just a citizen and hadn't sat in the meetings I've sat in, haven't read the stuff I've read, haven't talked to people I've read, I would also say, no, don't get rid of the water rights. You're silly. It's, it's twenty twenty-three, we're going to run out of water, we're going to fight wars over water. But so I, I think we would, we wouldn't solve the problem by putting it to a vote. But that just made me think of it when you said that, that the representative here.
I think we also have like our systems in place for a reason, you know, for how do we handle these things as they come up? And we're, we're taking the prescribed path that, you know, has been set before us. So I think that's to consider, you know. Um, I, where I'm at is kind of along the lines of uh, same as Janine, you know, the my emotional pull for me is hard. Um, but I learned, I've learned so much, you know, that I just am blown away by, you know, where, where we're at and where we came to get to this point. Um, I love, I'm so impressed. I want to tell you guys, I beg for participation. I don't know if you guys have seen me. Um, I, you know, I, I post frequently um, asking for people to participate. And so this is amazing to see you guys come out. I would love to see seats full like this all the time. Um, not just, you know, when, when we're talking about something that is that we're angry about. Uh, so yeah, thank you guys so much for, for coming in. For more Fruta people, because we did hear so much from Glade Park in the first meeting, which was great. You know, their community is going to be very impacted by this, but in the end, our burden of responsibility falls with the citizens of Fruta inside the city limits. I, I have frequently had to remind myself about that, you know, while we want to be good neighbors and while we know that what we're deciding affects more than just the people inside of the city limits. In the end, that's who our responsibility is to.
James, any thoughts?
Yeah.
Let me rephrase that. Any thoughts you care to share?
I've got a lot of thoughts about a lot of it, but um, I, I don't want to sway anybody's vote because I want everybody to vote what they feel like they should vote. Um, I, my heart's been really heavy on this the last week or two, or a couple of months, but I know what the Lord wants me to do, and I don't want to force anybody to do what I want to do. I feel like people really stepped up to do what we asked them to do. I think I'm just going to leave it at that.
Um, I guess I need to go. Um, first of all, I want to thank a whole bunch of people on this. Uh, as you can tell, this is not uh, an easy decision. Uh, I have no idea which way this is going to go. But uh, clearly, we've all put a lot of thought into this. Mary Elizabeth, I want to thank you for getting us the answers very quickly. Mike, uh, you and your entire staff have just been phenomenal as we come up with questions, uh, getting us those answers uh, and communicating to the public. Um, I want to thank everybody here that came out. This is a very uh, passionate topic, and uh, I want to convey how appreciative I am in terms of how everybody handled themselves uh, with respect for everybody here in the room. So thank you for that as well. Uh, and like all of you, it's, yeah, this is not an easy decision. But it is now eight thirty-five. We've heard from people, we've talked amongst ourselves, and now we're at that time. So we have a couple of different options. Mary Elizabeth, please correct me. I always like ask like you're not going to.
I'll correct you. Don't worry.
So, I mean, we have this ordinance in front of us. Um, we can have recommendation to accept the ordinance. We can do nothing uh, and have it die, or we can do another continuance. So.
I do not need to correct you. Those are your three options.
Okay. There's a first.
Um, but I, I would, I just would suggest it, if um, if there is a motion for a continuance, like last time, the continuance was for the purpose of getting, receiving answers to some additional questions. Um.
I'm not hearing a whole lot of additional questions being asked.
Right. So I would just say, if, if there is a motion for continuance, to have a, a purpose for that continuance, um, to, you know, either if there are additional questions, to please present those to the staff, so that's clear. Uh, or what the, you know, what the reason would be for continuing it. Again, yes, and that's correct, and it needs to be continued to a date certain. Um, so you're, you have a meeting on September fifth, and you have one on September nineteenth um, as regularly scheduled meetings.
And right now, the contract is they need to reply by the thirty-first of August?
That is correct. Um, so if it is continued, um, we would need them to extend uh, agree to extend that acceptance deadline.
Is there any indication if we were to do that? Whether they would not make, I mean, at that point, their offer is no longer valid, and then
Right.
They'd have to, they'd have to extend the offer for us to actually consider it in the future.
I have not um, spoken with the buyers, so I, I don't know.
But if we do say we're going to make a continuance, this offer ends, it'd have to extend that for it to even be a discussion.
So there, so there is a risk that it would go away, die on its, die on its own.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
And if that were to happen, then well, it would be the same as not acting on it tonight.
Right.
So I would suggest take some action.
Weird question. Never asked this before, but when we do do our vote, are we strictly a yea or nay? Or do we, can we say a statement during our votes?
There can be.
Just wondering that. I've never asked that before.
We'd need a motion, we'd need a second, and then we could have
Other discussion.
Further discussion of which the, that can be voiced, and then at that point in time, there'd be a call for vote.
Okay, but you can't, you can't vote and then say, you have to say it prior. Okay.
Right.
After a vote.
After everybody's vote.
Okay, good. That's what I do, just enough. Thank you.
Right?
Is that?
Is that right, Mary?
I, for purposes or rules of order, uh, my preference would be if there, there's a motion, there's a second, there can be additional discussion. If people have statements they would like to make, um, I would make them then, um, because once there's a vote, that is the decision of council. Um, and that's what's going forward. So individual, you know, statements at that point. Um, it, there's a decision that's been made, if that makes sense. So my preference would be if you would like to say something, say it before the vote.
All right. So we're at the point where there's a call for a motion, if anybody cares to make the motion.
For the sake of the questions, I'll make the motion. I am move, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, second reading, and ordinance author, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Fruta and Ronald Tipping, Rodney Power and Stan Muir for their purchase of fifty-one point four one acres known as Enoch Lake, and the water rights known as Mirror Ditch number one, Mirror Lake Reservoir number one, AKA Enoch Lake, and Springs RNN, and authorizing the conveyance thereof.
Okay, we have a first. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a first and a second. Now's the time for further discussion. So James, do you want to go first?
I don't have anything to say.
Um, the only hesitancy I have is that the public is used to something going for sale, there being offers, and then they're being considered. We didn't necessarily follow the steps. We did. I mean, we just didn't put a for sale sign in higher realtor and put it in MLS.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we didn't follow the steps.
Well, I, I, I think everything we did was above board and legal and fine. It's just my only reservation because on, online, in person, and here, a lot of people have expressed concern, like, I don't even know it's for sale. I would have liked to put in an offer, and I know that nobody has. Um, but that's my, that's my only reservation here. I'm for taking care of this problem for the city.
I feel the same. I would add also that I would love to give people more time to figure out how to get that, now that they understand that getting this liability off our books is the priority. Giving other entities um, an opportunity to purchase, purchase and manage it. I think it, I think would be very beneficial.
And it, and it's hard too, because this is a real offer. This is, in effect, this is a six hundred and forty thousand dollar offer.
Working him.
Yep, and we decide to do anything other than accept the offer, we're losing out on a real option of, of um, of financial impact um, to the community, um, besides just the decreasing our, our current expenses that we have on a annual basis, and the, the liabilities that are associated with it. I too am appreciative of all the comments and, and the desires and that it seems as though I know we've talked about it for, for, as, as an organization for, for decades. But I don't know if it's just that something clicked that it's like, oh crap, this is real deal. It's not just we want to get rid of it, because I, I'm, I'm with, with the comments that you two have made so far, and I know everybody else is, but um, we need to get rid of this. I understand that aspect of it, but I think what's done is the community's had a, a light switch go off, like this is real now. This isn't just talk. Um.
And they've done a lot in like the forty days, I believe, then, like, I, you have to.
And, yeah, and, and, and that's real, and it has, it has the, it has energy moving, and, and I, I think the the reality is, and the understanding is we got to do something about it. I think it seems like we've all agree that got to get this out of the control of the city of Fruta. And it's now a real option that people are need to really consider if they want to do something or not. Um, but anyway, that's all, all in my comments there.
Uh, yeah, this is clearly a, a tough decision, and that's why people you know, put their trust in us to make these decisions um, and do what's best for the majority. Uh, you know, for the city of Fruta. Um, yeah, I too, like others, am torn in this. But looking at, this has been over a decade, maybe, you know, thirty plus years. Um, and I agree with you, Aaron, it's one of those, I think there was an assumption that we would continue to take care of it um, on an ongoing basis, now that there's a real offer. There's that stir. Um, but you know, for me, I'm just, you know, we have this li, it's, it is a liability. I'm so impressed with the amount of work that's been done in such a short period of time. But we have something real on the table. I think there the reason why I asked you, Amy, in terms of you know, yes, there was a forty-five day window, but could there have been another offer? And I understand that we couldn't discuss that offer tonight. That's not the purpose of this, but I think that certainly would have had an influence on our decision-making process. At least from my standpoint, I can't clearly speak for you. So that's all I have to say. And with that, uh, Ms. Woods, would you please poll council?
Counselor Purser?
No.
Sir Williams?
No.
Counselor Cry?
No.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Uh, Counselor Hansi?
No.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails five to one.
All right. One down.
Are you sure I can't say anything?
Celebrate.
Can I, can I say something now?
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mary Elizabeth, can I say something, please?
I mean, we have the option of taking.
I, I would just like to say one thing. The only reason that I voted no is because you guys stepped up and you did what we asked you to do. I'll tell you what, if you don't do anything in the next year, I'll happily vote yes, because we need this thing to go away. It's up to you. That's simple. So keep, keep moving forward and keep pushing and doing, make it so that make this decision easy for us. Because if you don't, we're going to have to do what is wise for our community.
Okay, and I just, I, I would like to follow up. Thank you for that statement. I just want to follow up. Um, there will need to be another city council meeting to decide next steps, so please don't make any assumptions tonight about you know, that will go out in notices, it'll go out on the website, so you guys can know when that's going to be discussed. So I know there was some confusion last time about dates and deadlines, so I just want to make that clear that these guys will need to meet and decide when to next put this on the agenda and what that will look like. We don't know. We don't know yet. These, they need to decide how this is going to be handled. So what I'm trying to say is ten-
Yeah.
Tonight, we, please, look at the city's website, pay attention to the agendas so that you know when this is next on there, and it, it will be communicated that way.
We don't know it's going to be on that agenda.
No, we don't.
Correct.
We appreciate that for saying that, Mary Elizabeth, so it's, it's very clear.
We're just saying, at this, shing forward.
No public comments at this time. So at this point, the time is now eight fifty. It's been requested that we take a five-minute bio break. So, um, we will reconvene at eight fifty-five. Thank you.
Yep, sir.
The gab will finally get, it's used. I think in the past three years, in the past three years, that's done.
Can't come up.
Alright, so we need to get James. James? James, can you please come back to the dais?
James.
James, please come back, so we can continue the meeting. Alright. Hey.
Back up now?
No, Joel is not.
Oh.
Same meeting, same meeting.
Come up for item six.
Alright, uh, next on the agenda, uh, item B of the legislative agenda, continuance of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, second reading, an ordinance authorizing conveyance of real property of the city referred to as a two-acre parcel located on Pinion Mason Public Work, on Pinion Mesa. Public Works Director, Director Kimberly Bolin and City Attorney Mary Elizabeth Geiger, uh, you guys are up.
Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tam members of council, um, again, this is a continuance of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. The only question that, uh, came from the last meeting on this was, again, the road access, so, uh, similar to what we discussed this ordinance, uh, we reached out to, to the, um, County Public Works Director, Roden Bridge Director, and the county surveyor that, um, basically says this road is maintained as a public access road. It, it wouldn't change the maintenance of this road if this parcel was sold, that would continue to remain open because it accesses property south, um, as well as National Forest Service property. Um, we reached out to the Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service. Again, BLM says they don't have any trails. The closest route being two and a half miles away. Um, US Forest Service, again, indicated that Ridge, ATV Trail six forty-six, Black Pine Trail six forty-seven are both accessed from the road, and that the trailhead for six forty-six is located on private land adjacent to this eighteen-mile road. Um, again, these trails may also be accessed from the west side of the forest, but if the county road were ever closed, it would severely limit the ability to have a loop experience, which is what people have, uh, come to know. In that, um, it's highly unlikely that the Forest Service would, um, move forward on supporting a request to close this road for access purpose.
Mary Elizabeth, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, I think, actually Kimberly touched on it this time, but, uh, you know, it, it would take, it can't be just one landowner requesting, uh, that the route be dedicated as a county road. It would need to be a petition from all the people that have access off that road, and that would include the Forest Service, um, and then a vote of the county commissioners. So, I think that's, you know, an unlikely scenario, um, but also there hasn't been any indication or request that that would, that would happen, but that's not within the city's control.
Thank you. So I will not read this whole thing again. I'll spare everybody with that. Uh, but once again, we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak and to be heard. So, um, have we had anybody sign up on the sheet for this ordinance?
No, we have not, Mr. Mayor Pro-Tam.
Alright, uh, with that, once again, anybody, uh, who wants to speak, please come up and do so at this time. And once again, I ask that you s- provide your full name and address. Thank you.
Bill Muriel Steel, fourteen three ninety BS Road. Um, the only thing I wanted to say that the discussions amongst ourselves within the group of Enox is we do have interest in that two p- uh, acre parcel as well for, um, future projects as far as like storage, or possibly hosting like a camp supervisor to do maintenance and overall things like that. So we would ask that you would either say no at this time, or postpone as well. So that's all I got.
Great, thank you.
Uh, twenty-three thirty-one South Fifteen Road, Grant, or Glade Park. Uh, I agree with what Muriel just said, uh, I know you have another offer that, for a better price on that piece of property, but if we could just hold off on that for a little bit, and we would like to use that for staging area, if we could, for the campgrounds, that way, maybe if we develop some sites in there, we'll have a place to put our material, we're actually got an offer for a, uh, temporary storage shed, be brought up to the site, so we may work with that, so.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else would like to come up and speak on this issue? Okay, once we close, it's closed, going once. Alright, we will close, uh, public participation and bring it back to council.
Shannon, is it possible to, to bring it up on the, so we can actually see the lot that we're looking at?
And, and one thing I would, um, like to remind council, and it's in your packet, it's in the public packet, um, that you did receive an offer from a third party, and then you did receive a revised offer from, um, Mr. Powers, uh, and I should have had this pulled up myself.
The original was sixteen, and then Powers was, the second, Powers was fifty. What was the other, the third, the other party?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
So, um, just when you start getting to a point where you're thi- thinking about, you know, what, what motion you're going to make, or what, um, actions you can take, uh, you, this one's slightly different because you do have that other offer from Mr. Powers. So that's what's, you know, on the table in front of you. You can amend the ordinance to accept um, that, that offer for fifty.
Revised.
Revised offer, yeah, th- that is correct.
Don't you dare laugh at me if I get up and.
Go, go ahead. Yes, we would. In this property, there's a ro- the, a road goes right, like, a main road goes right by it. It's, it's right on the side of the
Yeah.
Side of, so refreshing.
Oh, it's over there. And just consideration, how far away is this two parcel from Enix Lake?
Kimberly, can you answer that? Half mile? Not far. Quarter mile, very close.
Most proximity, but it's, there's still some distance between the two.
It's not contiguous to the Enix Lake parcel.
Thank you.
We need him to zoom in.
This is.
Enix Lake looks tiny, and then the little, is it just zoomed in, so that we?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, where is the actual two acres?
Lake is on the right side in the gray.
That's why I'm saying that there's no way that that's two acres, the big crazy green.
So where is the, where is the?
Where's the actual property?
Hold on, I'm just looking in the packet.
Yeah, I remember we had a picture of it, and it showed it right along the road. Sorry, I didn't see it in today's packet.
I don't like.
I think it's in the old one. It had a lot, yeah, that's what I was hoping he'd pull up. It's not, it's that, wasn't it? It showed it like right along a road and a little square off the road.
Eighteen packet and the slideshow.
So, we should be able to get there with the legal, right?
It's in the seven eighteen.
Sorry, guys, I, I just, I have a vision of the one I want to see.
That's corner section five.
It's gonna be hard with those calls to figure out exactly, unless you're a surveyor, which I'm not.
It was in the last packet, though. It was. Okay, sorry, guys. It'll be really helpful to see it, though. It's not in the new one, it's in the old one.
Should be seven, seven eighteen.
So this
It'll be seven eighteen.
A reminder, this one, it does have access to the road to, uh, councilman, councilperson, excuse me, person's question. Uh, and Mr. Powers does own the property that surrounds, you know, surrounds it on the other side. But this is different, if you recall, the parcel that you did authorize the conveyance of was a donut hole and did not have. This parcel does not have water rights, which is also, it did not go to you for that right of first refusal, because that was not applicable.
Now I feel bad.
Well, they're pulling that up. Does anybody else have any questions until that gets, or comments?
My issue with this one is the same as with the last one, just that. Yeah. Which, again, I'll reiterate, I think we did everything right. Just in getting involved at the end, there's a perception that we, since people are used to things with a for sale sign, we didn't go through that process.
Right, we did the opposite.
I think that can be a conversation for a future meeting.
Yep.
Just go back to the seven eighteen thing, and then it's in the.
Must be in the presentation.
Oh, it must have been in just his presentation.
I didn't see it skimming through the.
You're right, it's not in ours, it's in the presentation from that night.
Oh, here we go.
Our IT director is on it.
IT director for the win. Yeah, that's.
Let's bring that up over thirty percent.
But it's. That's the one right there on the right.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, that's what we're talking about. Okay, and that's a quarter mile, you're saying? Ish.
About this far.
So, from here to my shop. Okay.
Ish.
Ish.
It's not far.
Does that answer your question, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to see that. I, that helps a lot more than that other picture did. Thank you.
Questions, comments from council?
I'm, I tend to lean towards just to, to amend the offer to take the, amend the ordinance to, uh, to the price of fifty thousand is where I'm leaning towards.
Any questions?
We've had, we've had an offer. We had the original offer, we had a second, we had a counter, well, however legally amendment, um.
For the record, it wasn't, there wasn't a, there was not a counter. It was an amended offer.
Amended offer to, to fifty. Right. I, I'm so inclined to, to amend it to fit the original ordinance to fifty thousand and, and vote.
Got any questions for staff? I'm just gonna go around the room.
I don't have any questions.
Ken? James? Okay, well, it is now nine oh seven, and there are no other questions or comments. So, once again, the same o- o- options are open to us, whether we can take no action. So once again, the same options are open to us, whether we can take no action and have this die. That way we can do a continuance or we can call for, except, or have a motion.
So this one, you have option four, which is amended, a motion to amend the ordinance to accept.
I'm, I moved to what she just said, so stated that.
Mend ordinance number twenty, twenty-three dash oh eight, authorizing.
Still moved.
To accept the fifty thousand dollar offer, revised offer sent from Mr. Rod Powers.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional questions or comments from council? Going around the room. All right, there are no others. With that, Ms. Woods, would you please poll council?
Excuse me, Council Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
No.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
And Counselor Persson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Right.
I mean, five to one, excuse me.
That's correct.
All right, with that, legislative public hearings are closed. I'm going to ask the mayor to come back up to continue the meeting, starting with the city manager's report. So Joel, if you will kindly work your way down here and take the center seat.
Read the Price is Right in honor of Barb Barker's.
Yeah, you need the music.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Only a couple, a couple items tonight. One is you received lots of invites to public meetings and different things from other agencies that have been emailed to you. So hopefully just let us know on those RSVPs. Won't take up any more time for, you know, various public events that you as a council have been invited to. And then the only other item we have is that we need to know if you are available to schedule a fruit of housing authority meeting before the council meeting in a week from today on September fifth. So it'd be likely an hour prior to the meeting. So at six o'clock, we just, there's a, it, it looks as if the second grant request from the Muse development will need to come before the, the housing authority. And as long as they have everything into us this week to make the packet. So need to know, and we found that out today. So need to know if you have the availability to, for us to put that on the schedule and schedule a housing authority meeting at six o'clock on September fifth.
One quick question. Do we have a, any council or board interviews set up on that day?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay. I do want to point out that is the fruit of pool dog day. Four to six and I will be able to make that meeting. I may have some dog hair on me, but I will be at that meeting.
Dog days.
I, I will not be able to attend that or the council meeting that night. That was in my notes. My son has a game in Montrose that night.
All right.
And can everybody else make it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all for tonight. Appreciate it.
Do we want to, can we put it, do we want to entertain doing it after? Because it seems like the agenda is.
The, the challenge with that would be you're, you're paying your special counsel per hour, a large amount of money to wait until the end of the meeting, so.
Well, do we have the housing at seven and then our city council right after?
Well, I probably won't be.
Yeah, no, I can't.
I know she can't make it no matter what. I'm saying the rest of us.
Everybody else can make it at.
No, I'm just, I'm just proposing. Do we? I'm still good.
I'm good. I'm good at six. I'm good.
I'm not saying that we're making. I'm just saying.
What the challenge with that is, is that we always have our council meetings at.
And I've already advertised public hearing.
Fair enough. That works. Okay.
So what time is the meeting?
Six o'clock for a housing authority.
Yeah, it's, it's too late. What, because of those advertisements, it's too late to change the, it's, of course, we can make changes twenty-four hours advance, but there's two quasi judicial hearings that have been publicly noticed for seven o'clock for the council. So we would need to keep that.
Take off their crown.
All right, all right, Mike. So that's everything. All right. So with that, then we move into our council reports and actions. Who wants, who wants to start with that one?
Oh, I got.
All right, Janine?
Nope, nothing. Thank you.
James? Ken?
Um, I had a, a Grand Valley Transit yesterday. I don't think there was anything outstanding that is worth. Grand Valley Regional Transit Authority. Yeah. Back up and going. Yep. And I think we're meeting to discuss that they're working on a new facility and anyway.
I have a few things, but they should all be pretty quick. First of all, the, our history room is in need of yearbooks. There's some specific years and I can communicate this, but, and then anything from two thousand forward, they don't have at all. So if you guys ever like, you know, have come across any of that or like I, I'm, we're, they're, we're working, gonna work on putting out a call to action for those things, but it came up during the, I stopped in for their open house and that was a need that was expressed to me there.
Reach out to the yearbook committee at the school. I wonder if they have some.
Or, well, they, they keep.
Forward at least.
Yeah, so they keep one for their, like, they have them for their own records and for, and then the, the library gets one. But they don't, yeah. So just moving forward, the history room is going to reach out to them to keep, you know, basically have a subscription for the yearbooks, but they're looking for that.
Two thousand.
It's two thousand forward and then there were a few random years. I, I have that information, but definitely they don't have anything after ninety-nine.
Wow.
Yeah. And then the, I also got some feedback that the, our commissions mixer was very well appreciated, which was awesome. However, it was too loud. They couldn't hear, which I agree. We were having a hard time, you know, at our table, hearing one another. So perhaps next year we could try to figure out how to kind of maybe space. They loved the format of, of how we did it. Lots of good feedback there and, and the appreciation they loved. They definitely want to see that happen again. But they just couldn't hear what was being said, which is kind of the point of the whole thing. So I, I appreciated that they gave me that feedback too. And then lastly, the, there's been a lot of, a lot of traffic on our link for the developer, you know, to go and look, which I love. We don't have a pin on the map for the Muse. I wasn't sure if I need to reach out to Deanna about that or Mike, if you, there's not, like, I think it's the only one that's missing.
Right, we'll make sure it's added.
Yeah.
Why, but.
Uh, yeah, so brought up by a couple of people that, that it wasn't on there and that's one of our most interesting ones going right now that people are looking for, so.
A pin to on the map, so it's, it's.
Yeah, so like in our link, it's listed and all the information is there. It doesn't have, for people who don't know what it's called, you know, they know where it's at. They know the location.
They're not seeing.
But they're not, yeah, it's not on, it's not one of the little red. And that's, you know, that's just such a great communication tool.
Oh, thank you. We'll, we'll make sure to get that correct.
Thank you. Oh, tomorrow I'm attending the HBA governmental affairs luncheon is tomorrow, so. Great. That'll be, yeah, got invited to that again, so. I'll report back.
All right, I have a, since Amy brought that up about our, the boards and commissions mixer, we're doing the, the Mesa County Town Hall that's coming in. Is that October, I think, Mike, when they're doing that?
November, I believe.
November. They're talking about, they're doing that same roundtable format and we were talking about having it at the community center because that's the space where we have. So I don't know if there's a way for that.
It's, it's scheduled for the community center. The only other place is this room, which is worse, so. We just have to figure out.
It was loud. Yeah.
Was music playing in the bathroom?
Yeah.
That was hard. Yeah.
I'd say there were, if you think about it.
Could do is spread it out.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if we can move the food into the kitchen.
There won't be food for that one there.
There will be less tables as well. We had like, we had a lot of tables. So every table has a speaker at the Mesa County one. There will only be, there'll probably be half the amount.
It shouldn't be an issue for that, but for future mixed hour specific event, we will definitely need to figure out.
Have to look at it different.
All right. And then the other one I have, Amy and I did an interview for the planning commission and I know Mike and I talked a little bit about, what was the timeline again, Mike? We've got to go through a process for updating the planning commission.
Yeah, so right now we had slated for the September workshop, two items. And one of those items we have to do by charter and that's, that's the, that's our, kind of our kickoff of the budget where really it's receiving in the packet, the first draft, not a long, a lengthy discussion because you have plenty of meetings after, but we have that. And then the second is to recap all of your update meetings with each board and commission. I know you had given us some feedback related to before we do anything, let's, on boards and commissions, let's, let's have that, you know, that recap. I would, I would throw out there that never was there any feedback from any of you related to any changes to the planning commission in that process. Except for we do need to, at the, you know, at the recommendation of our city attorney, we need to make that change where we take out of the ordinance. So it's an ordinance process to remove a council liaison on the planning commission for those that, you know, what the city attorney discussed. So we haven't started that, but we'd like to just get that going. A first reading at an upcoming meeting. And then second reading, as they're interviewing, they can fill alternates, so, but, but we, you know, now we have applicants to fill that position, so we might as well get that going, so.
Everybody okay with starting that?
Okay, great. We'll, we'll, we'll get that. We'll have to look at when we can, all the, the timing of posting, but, so it might, it's not, first reading won't be next week, but it'll, hopefully we can get it on the, the next meeting in September, the third week of September. So the first reading and then a month later will be the hearing, then it takes effect thirty days after that.
All right, that's all I have. A question. Aaron, I'm going to address this to you because as we start going into budgets. Enough said. Um, for me, after the initial budget, getting a hard copy is after the initial reading is easier for me to kind of track and follow. I don't know where you are on that. So I know Mike, last year, a couple of us requested a hard copy of the budget. So for me, after that initial presentation, and any changes? Yes, we have the kickoff. Then after we have this discussion at the kickoffs, if there's changes that need to be made there, then to get that in the hard printout is how my preference. I don't, I don't want people to have to do extra work, so I'd make sure, like to make sure we're in alignment.
Just, just to be sure, that could be about five to six different printouts because it'll change multiple times during the, the three months, but we can do that.
I, I get that.
Well, we're, the process is that we're going to get different sections. We're going to be discussing various sections throughout the process.
Right.
And then that's, that's where.
So my question to you is, when would you prefer to have the printout kind of for review? For me, it's easier, like if we do the initial one, we get a hard printout, I can review it. And then as we go into those additional meetings, it's easier for me to have questions. And at the end, I'm fine with just the electronic copy. I don't need a second printout. But that's how I work on it, Aaron. I don't.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm very, very similar to that. So I just. Let, let me ask some questions with that. So we're going to have the budget presentation, but you're going, a lot of it's going to be solidified when it comes to, not much is necessarily going to be changing between our conversations and then the final approval, correct?
Yeah, so we, we're bringing a first draft of a recommended budget to you all. There is a lot that gets built throughout the remainder of those discussions, so it's not the, so I guess we would print that out. You'll have it to, so leading into some of those first discussions. But then after those, we're constantly making those updates and then we'll be sending out those updates so you know. But we, yeah, we can provide, at any stage, we can print out whatever draft we have at that point, so.
Yeah, I, I tend to, it would be nice to have a one at the beginning, understand, with the understandings that it changes, just so we can have something going, going along the way.
Yeah. I guess my other question related to that, so on the digital, I don't want to print out, but for the digital copy, well, we have links right from the start, like what you had at the final document. That way it's easy to jump.
That was great.
Yeah.
I vote for that. That was so much easier.
That's, that's all I want to have, so we can.
I, 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 it sounds like you and I would like to have hard copies from the.
Multiple with highlighters.
Yeah. I think, let's see how it goes. Let's see if we can get copies out at that first. Could use like a, or in preparation for that first meeting and understanding that of course there's going to change.
Anything else, Matthew?
No, I think I've caused enough.
All right, so I have, I guess I have one more. So based on discussions tonight and the other hearing, what do we have on our workshop? I guess how busy is our workshop? Because we'll need to decide if we want to talk about our procedures for how we list land and, and what that process in the future is moving forward. It's not a discussion for tonight because we need to.
So that, that's the one we just discussed. So the, the budget and then the boards and commission.
Right. So how much, I guess, how much time do you feel that's going to be or do we?
That'll take two hours, I would have.
For what?
For the two things we have on the workshop, right?
I guess it's up to council. When do we want to put that on a, for a?
You also, you also can postpone your board and commission discussion to a different time as well. I mean, that's up to you all, so.
I really don't want to postpone the board and commission's conversation because I really.
Already been postponed.
I, 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 I really, well, not only that, but the downtown advisory board is literally waiting on us.
Also, okay, going later than.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so I'm fine with all of it, but I, I don't.
Saying just have a long night, add that to the.
You're, you're not held to only, Mary Elizabeth, just, I mean, you can, you can have a discussion on the process, next steps process for the mountain properties at any meeting, whether workshop or a regular meeting. It's up to you all, so.
We want to throw it off.
Same with boards and commission.
He's saying like tonight, if we want to have discussion tonight, we can, but normally we're saying.
I would advise, sorry. Don't have it tonight because all these people just left and I informed them that it would be on a future agenda, so.
That's why I say normally we say, let's put it on an agenda.
Yeah.
It's posted.
So tonight you guys can, if you want to pick a date, to put it on. We have a feeling that's going to go through several iterations. It's not going to necessarily be a one night conversation. So, you know, it's kind of up to you guys when you want to start that. I don't know what the, how heavy the agendas are for September nineteenth.
What about the fifth? That's.
I would love to just go ahead and start it on our workshop myself.
Well, do we want to even kick off? I know Amy's not here, but on the fifth, that's a light agenda night.
That's what we're talking. No, your workshop September.
Workshop night.
We can have it in a regular meeting as well.
We can in a regular meeting too.
And that's what I said.
I'm not available on September fifth.
I prefer it was in a workshop.
Me too.
Your, your workshop is September twenty-sixth.
I'm maybe not available on the twenty-sixth, just.
So I guess here's the que, the, if you're not available, I mean, it's just a matter of, if it's at a workshop, we're not making decisions. We're just
discussing.
Discussing, you know, maybe next steps. And if there's some insight that Mary Elizabeth can do before that, if we have questions or things, she can supply us with those. Unless you really feel like you need to be there for that. That's the question.
I think, I mean, my preference would be from a transparency standpoint is to, if you have questions for me to those, for those to be asked of me there, it didn't, I'm not saying executive session, but I mean, you know, if we're going to have that discussion, I think it makes more sense to do that all at a meeting.
So the nineteenth perhaps is what you're saying.
I'm available on the nineteenth. I'm, I'm taking my kid to college. So the twen, that's, I don't know if I'll be back on the twenty-sixth yet or not. It depends on, well, it depends.
So for example, you could have, at this point, like that you're in right now, under council reports and actions, you could have an item to discuss next steps, right? And then you have a discussion even on the nineteenth. You could, you could do that. You could have it on a workshop. If you have it on a workshop, you're having that discussion, but all you can really do is give us direction on like posting something for another meeting, right? So.
Right, at a regular council meeting, we can take action if we want.
If you, if you choose to do it at the, the workshop and Mary Elizabeth's not there and there are questions and it'll just, you know, that'll go to another.
What about the, the nineteenth right now? That doesn't look like it's too heavy of a night.
It's, it's not right now. That's a fairly light.
I say the nineteenth, get it going.
All right.
Okay.
Put that on the agenda for the nineteenth.
Fill the hole. Before something else does.
Right.
Again, that's, that's not a, that's not a, that's not a public hearing, right? That, that'll be just like this. You're just discussing your, what, what you're thinking for next steps and.
I think some of the, again, transparency, because that's what hearing is that there won't be public comment on that because it's during council reports. It's going to be a council discussion with that.
There'll probably be a result.
So, all right, anything else? All right, hearing done, the time is now nine thirty and we are meeting.